I want to welcome everyone. Thank you for coming. This meeting is at the request of our customers in the community. Kind of a follow-up update for the community from our last meeting a couple of weeks ago. And just for the benefit of the group, since there are some new faces since the last time we met, my name is Adam Dillinger. I am the general manager for Seal Rock Water District. I do want to note that our board president, Mr. Rob Mills, is sitting at the end of the table, joining us today. Rob and the rest of the board have been briefed on what the district is doing in response to the aerial application up on South Beaver Creek, which is the topic of our discussion this morning. I'm happy to do a round of introductions, if you would like to do that very quickly for the benefit of the room. Many of you may know who's here. I am not aware of everyone that's in attendance, so if we can maybe start in the back, we can start there and just go around, just it'd be nice to know your name and if you're a Seal Rock Water District customer.
Yeah, Rebecca Baker, I am a Seal Rock Water customer living south of the beach. I called you.
So we have been playing contact. What was your name?
You live on the line or? My name's Sophia, I live in Newport, but I like to play out in the Beaver Creek area with my friends and community, so I do drink water there sometimes.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jody Stecker, I live up north Beaver Creek Road. My water comes from a spring. I'm 1.94 miles from the nearest spray place, so I'm not worried about my water. I work for Double E Northwest, which is the Emery, Will and Bonnie Emery's property, Wilder and Steel String and Land Waves, and I'm the one of two land managers there. And our water comes, actually Seal Rock Water goes right through our property.
It does.
And so I'm concerned from that standpoint and also from the environmental standpoint.
And you and I haven't met, so this is a great opportunity.
Yeah, and Phil Sconce was going to be here. He's the other land manager, and something came up at work and he couldn't make it.
Okay.
I'm Heather Graham. I have a 20-acre property at ground zero, about 100 yards from the spray. I get my water from the ground. I'm concerned about all people downstream.
Sure, thank you, thank you for coming. Go ahead.
And I'm Laura Gill, and I am on South Beaver Creek Road, about one mile from Heather, I believe. And so I'm possibly right on the edge, I think between the hills and everything, I might be okay, but I drive past you guys every single day.
Linda Engel, I am a resident here in Seal Rock, and I'm here as an individual. I'm not here representing the fire department, so ignore my attire today.
Well, we'll welcome you in any fashion.
All right. I'm Michael Nowak. I'm a Seal Rock resident, and I'm here for the, my neighbors in Fox Creek community.
Thank you.
I'm Ken Opel, I live in Bay Shore. I'm on the board of directors there.
I'm John Perulis from Bright Path Video. I also live in Bay Shore and a homeowner there.
Thank you.
Trish Farrell French, Beaver Creek water user, and I live in Bay Shore.
John French, Bay Shore water drinker.
I'm Kai Anrius, and I live just up the hill here in Seal Rock.
Ted Duett, I live in Mackay, at the mouth of the Beaver Creek watershed, and I'm a Seal Rock Water District customer.
I'm Willow Casner, and I am South Beaver Creek. I'm kind of in the middle of seven of the units to be sprayed. I'm down in the wetland. So as soon as it rains, it's all coming through, closer to the top where Heather and other people live, and then it's going to come down into the watershed that I'm in as it rolls down towards the Seal Rock intake. So I'm worried about everybody.
Go ahead.
Ian Bryant Beaton, and I'm a Mackay resident, and yeah, certainly concerned about our drinking water supply and the environment in general.
Thank you.
I'm Garrett Jarris, Yavat's news.
I'm Bobby Calhoun, resident of Mackay and member of the budget committee for Seal Rock Water.
Bradley Nguyen, employee of Seal Rock Water District.
I'm Rob Mills, member of the board and a Seal Rock Water District customer. Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you first of all for coming. And I think what I'd like to do is just open the floor for discussion, since this meeting was at the request of the community, I want to address some of your concerns and then I'll maybe wrap up at the end with what the district is doing in response to this issue.
So my, all I've been trying to do is bring awareness to the community and reach out. That's just my major role of what I've been doing. And I am really concerned because I cannot find an agency or an expert to tell us what is it that we are supposed to do. Because the alternative water source is Selec, which is also due to be sprayed, and so then, okay, are we, we're not supposed to drink the water? Can we cook with it? Are we supposed to feed, water our plants with it? Are we supposed to, like, how do we live? How do we function day-to-day when we know that the water is tainted? And in any way, I'm not blaming the water district at all for the spray. I mean, it's obvious, I think, and clear that you're not doing the spray, but we would need some answers. And I have not, I'm not clear on what to tell people, and I moderate public meetings, and this comes up all the time. What are we supposed to do?
Well, that is a good question. Naturally, we are concerned about that as well. I think it's important to remember that we all want the same thing for our community, and that is the expectation that we can all enjoy safe, reliable drinking water that meets state and federal standards. That's the objective of the district, is to provide that water to our community.
At this point in time, I'm not sure that's in your control. I think that's the overwhelmingly, that's the big concern of the whole community.
Right.
Of course we all want that.
I certainly understand that, and I can understand that it's a concern. The district does test for herbicides and pesticides now. Those test results indicate that they're, that nothing is detected in the water that we're providing to our, to our community, to our customers. Those tests results have been made public, they're already part of a public record. You can find the test results for the district's herbicides and most recent herbicide and pesticide testing, or what is known under the Oregon Health Authority Regulative Branch as synthetic organic compounds.
We're not, we're not concerned with right now. We are concerned, we, I feel like we're kind of going into a war zone. Like, we're like fighting something that is not going to be visible.
Yes.
It's, it's going to be in the water.
Right.
I don't think that you can stop the drift. I mean, you're Superman, we've been working on this for a long time, but there are things that we can't, we can't do.
And I'm not suggesting that the district can't.
No, I know, and I'm...
What I'm trying to describe to you and to the community is what the district can do and will do, working with the regulatory agencies that we work with as a municipal water provider in the community, to ensure that our water is safe.
So what's great is that you're giving us pre-data, so that we can say baseline data.
Yeah, of course.
Where, and so, gosh, I applaud you for that. I mean, we're really excited that we have that data. But the thing is that we're trying to gear up here for, we don't know what day, we don't know what time.
We have a twelve-hour window. That's not long enough to move farms.
Right, so if we have an idea and you can tell people, okay, here's a game plan, this is what you need to do, it's a whole lot better than us going in, everybody's afraid. Like, that's not, that's not a feeling that we want to feel. So all of the information that you just said doesn't really answer the question that I have.
Well, okay, and I know it doesn't, because I don't, I don't have an answer directly for that question, other than the information I'm providing you, that the district, not just the water district, but every community water system in the state of Oregon uses to protect its sources of water.
And we applaud you for having those in place.
Yeah, yeah, and thank you for that. What we are doing is no different than any other community water system in the state of Oregon in response to this issue. And so we, we hope to be notified, that is the request that we have of the consultant working for the timberland owner, and depending on what process is used, and right now, we, I think it's best to work on the assumption that it's going to be aerial, the aerial application of this material, and so we're, once we are notified, our system will come offline. We have no intentions of bringing water in that is contaminated or polluted. So, so we, you know, there are certain things you can do with treated water if you suspect that it has pollutants in it, and those are not, you can, you can look online if you're concerned about that, there's some recommendations. I'm not comfortable with the district making those recommendations because they're not provided by the Oregon Health Authority. That's, that's who we're working with on these questions.
I guess what I would say is that, and then I'm not going to say anymore because there's both hands up.
I know.
Is that we would really like the water district to have an inner-agency meeting. The Department of Water Resources had no idea that our water was going to be tainted as of yesterday.
Department of Water?
Department of Water Resources?
The Water Resources?
Fishing?
OWRD and...
Yeah, had no idea.
And ODF and W are not part of the four agencies responsible for protecting source water.
Okay, again, we don't know who...
So, so the, so the agencies responsible for protecting source water are Oregon Department of Agriculture, Oregon Department of Forestry, Oregon Health Authority, and DEQ.
So they issue permits in order to apply this herbicide?
ODF does.
No, they're not a permitting agency.
But they're not, they're not really...
Who is?
Nobody is. The companies, any forest activity on private land in Oregon has to put in a notification to ODF, the Oregon Department of Forestry, put in a notification, it has to follow certain guidelines, rules from 1971, I believe, really on state law.
And so they don't give opportunity to, let's say, show up and stakeholder meeting, anything like that?
There's, there's a 14-day, so they put in the application or the notification, depending on what forest activity it is. For aerial spraying, it's a 30-day or 60, let's see, 30-day waiting period, and 14 days of that is open for public comment. So the first 14 days, the application goes in, there's public comment, it gets registered with the Oregon Department of Forestry, gets sent to the other person, the notifier, and then if the Oregon Department of Forestry stewardship forester, which in this case is Riley Sutton, and maybe they use the whole, you know, the whole staff, I don't know, who else, they use to go through these, but they look at the written plans that are requested for each sensitive area listed on the notification, and if they don't find any problems with the written plan legally, if it adheres to the updated act, then they don't do anything about it. They don't...
They just say, you make the letter of the law?
Yeah, they don't, if they, if they don't find a specific hole within there, which I feel is a very small amount of details to look through, they just let it go ahead. They don't have a yes or a no, they just have a, we can put comments and we can say, this doesn't fit, la la la.
So there's no federal oversight, no state environmental quality oversight?
No.
There's, there is, and I can talk about that in a minute. You had a question.
Right, I was curious. Have you been able to set up a meeting with the owner? Understanding he might be in the area, I don't know, if that's just a rumor, perhaps just curious, one-on-one type of thing.
The district, the district has not been successful at setting up a meeting with the property owner, although we hope to, and we expect to, if that's possible. That is one of the recommendations of the Oregon Department of Forestry or the four state agencies, is for the district to meet with all of the timberland owners in our watersheds to kind of communicate with them with respect to what the district's operation is on Beaver Creek. And that's what we hope to do with this, this landowner too.
Do we know what kind of person this is that you're dealing with or would be dealing with? I'm just curious, you know, I mean, does he listen, or, you know, I mean, hello? It's my land, I'm doing what I want, screw you.
I'm not sure, there's, I've only been talking with the consultants hired by the contractor only.
Thank you, okay.
He's an older man from Denmark.
Yeah, right.
And he bought the land, he bought the land up in the area that he's going to be, that he just cleared cut, is going to be spraying. As far as I understand from the locals, I'm a local up there too, but I left him none of those years. He bought the land in 93 or right around, or I think he might have bought it actually in 82. Anyways, he, the first time he logged it was 93, now he's logging it again. According to the old timers up there, they ended up talking to him and having a meeting with him, and he was, he was reasonable at the end and decided not to spray them. It has a lot to do with the, according to them, it had a lot to do with the acting forester from the consulting company at the time, that they call the forest boss. He was up there looking, walking through the woods at that time and kind of got to know the locals a little bit. And so for his recommendation, I'm pretty sure that's why the owner came down and talked to them, according to what they say, what they're saying. This time, we haven't seen the forest boss at all, Tyrol Foremer, whatever, from the consulting company, no one's met him out here, and it's not the same, you know, it's not, it's 30 years later, they're not wandering through the woods, he's kind of already got the plan, I think. So no one's seen him at our end.
Well, he's, he's a new guy, he came down from Canada. He was, he was a forester up in Canada before he was hired by the consulting company.
Apparently, they do a walk-through before they do the cut, so he's probably been out here, but we didn't, you know.
Well, I know we're all concerned about the aerial spray with drift and whatnot, which is a big concern, because I know we had one, was it three or four years ago, that was someone sprayed here and had the drift, it was blowing about 25, 30 miles an hour, it was ground, you know? And I'm wondering, if he doesn't spray, aerospray, will he go and do, you know, ground spraying, you know? That just is bad to a certain extent, so.
That's the recommendation that, or a consideration, from what I understand from the consultant, is that there is a potential that they will ground apply herbicides, which, which would, we kind of heard that early on, but we would have expected a follow-up NOAP to that effect, and we have not seen that, so I'm not sure how credible that is.
Well, I know that he wants to keep down the weeds and other things that would be competing with his trees, but then I wonder about all the nutrients and bugs and this and whatever that are important for survival of plants, like trees, what it's going to do to them. And it's like, what'd they do years ago? I mean...
We know what they did years ago.
Always before a roundup, right?
They used mulch around the trees years ago. We were told this by some old foresters.
So there's lots of questions.
Right, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, go ahead.
I'm confused, who actually makes the decision as to if it's sprayed or not? The owner, a realtor, the logging company? Who's involved?
Well, I think, and I'm not an expert at this, Bobby, but it's really the property owners that work, the timberland owners that work with the consultants, and they make the decision on, on how they're going to manage the land, and then they, under the Oregon Forest Practice Act, they have to apply and meet certain conditions to use the kind of methods for managing the property.
Well, it would seem logical to me, and I'm not always logical, that the owner would be dependent upon what kind of advice he would be getting.
That's right.
And the logging company would be interested in making the most profit that they can.
Right.
So maybe trying to get in contact with the owner is superficial. Maybe we should contact the consultant, the person who is suggesting the spray, and give him other alternative methods for making even a better profit to help save the environment.
The district has been in contact with the consultant on a number of occasions to discuss, to discuss this. Their position of the consultant in my last conversation was that the, the NOAP, the application for aerial application of herbicides, meets the requirements of the Oregon Forest Practice Act for this region, and that's what they're considering.
Well, is that all that they're considering?
I think they consider, they consider other options, they are considering, you know, application by backpack sprayer, they are, they are considering that use, from what I understand, although I haven't. That requires another application, which we haven't seen.
Who is this consultant?
It's HFI, they're out of Battleground, Washington, and the gentleman's name is on the application, his, his name is Tyrol Forfar.
So what's his background?
Forestry, he's a, he's a forest manager.
So do we have a comparable consultant talking to him about alternative choices?
The, I, I think that, if I understand the process right, Bobby, that's a good question. We as a district don't have...
No, really, is that...
But ODF, ODF does communicate back and forth with the consultant with respect to what, you know, what activities will take place on the property.
But they're, but they're not giving him alternatives.
They're not giving him alternatives.
No, they're only talking about the letter of the law.
I'm not, yeah. Sorry.
No, 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 you're fine, you're brilliant, you're brilliant.
Well, no, but could there be, I'm a...
Go ahead.
...secret.
Yeah.
Could there be a meeting with you and a group of consultants knowledgeable in this field to talk with that consultant, I don't remember what name he said, and look at alternative methods that could be environmentally friendly, that could be profitable, and they could have a plan, and also, don't tar and feather me, but also where, it's going to cost us money, I don't care how you look at it, it's going to cost us money. And if we could put our money into something that's investment into the environment, and maybe soften the load with the logging company, and say, okay, if you buy our method, we'll help support it financially, and this should help you with your profit, and it'll help save the property. Have these consultants sit down and talk about it?
Friends speaks my mind. That was excellent.
That is exactly the district's position.
Good.
But they haven't taken all this stuff.
But we, we are willing, as a district, to enter into that dialogue. We need the consultant and the property owner to be willing to enter into that dialogue. So we have, we've yet to have that discussion, we still hope to have that discussion.
There has to be a magic person that can penetrate that.
Well, I, I hope...
I'm optimistic.
And that's, that's remain optimistic, because I still, I still believe that's going to happen, go ahead.
Ken, I just want to comment on, on this to let people know, for those of us who are not aware of how private lands are logged, and I'm just learning about this, because I just started with Double E Northwest, and we are, as any of the Wilder users know, we are in the midst of logging. We have the family that owns the land, the Emery family, and they have hired a forester, and that forester then manages the land over the long term, and Will Emery has worked with Mark Barnes for 25 years on this land.
Is that Travel Mountain?
About, shoot, I'm not coming up with the name of that.
It's all right, go ahead.
Yeah, IRM, Integrated Resource Management. And anyway, IRM manages our forest land, and Wilder's only 800 and change acres, the Emerys have 2,500 acres, I think, that, that are managed by this company. IRM hires the logger, and as onsite land managers, we have been in a situation where the family will tell us one thing, what they think is going on, and the, the forester representative will tell us another, and then we see the logger going out and doing something else. And so there are communication issues just in a small...
It is, yeah.
A small outfit. Now, when I say small outfit, the other thing I wanted to say is, HFI is four people, all right? If you go to their website, you can read the background of these four people, which is how I knew that, that my role is, is Canadian, right? Maybe he's actually accessible mentally. That's political, don't drop that. Anyway, I agree that going through the, I mean, the landowner may not have a direct day-to-day involvement in this. The landowner may well have said, "HFI, you do it."
Actually, that would be the opposite in this case.
In this case, all right, that's information that I didn't have, so that makes it more difficult.
The property owner, from what I understand, the communication that I've received from the consultant is that the property owner is engaged in this process, in the management process of property in the South Beaver Creek area.
Okay, that's incredibly good information.
Do they?
Because it's not always that way.
Do they have a...
Yes, it is, for larger places, you're right.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Do they have a broker to set up this agreement between the owner and what happens to the harvest, the logging?
They, they do, they, they work with a harvester, the consultant will work with a harvester, they work with...
But a broker, like a realtor, I mean...
No.
Okay.
So, go ahead.
Question, this idea of having a, providing a, presenting an alternative to the landowner and the, and the HFI is great, do, if, if a viable and practical alternative exists, and I'm not a forester, I don't know, it sounds like there ought to be, but do we have, do we have any knowledge of somebody with that kind of expertise who could guide us or be a consultant for us, or whatever, who might know if that, an alternative to herbicide forestry is, you know, on kind of... who might know if that, an alternative to herbicide forestry is, you know, kind of realistic?
I'm told Cusbeach Tribe does something like that on their tribal lands. Cusbeach Tribe owns, controls their tribal lands in the five counties down there, Kokil, Cusbeach. And I'm told by a member of Cusbeach Tribe that they don't do it this way.
Does the district have access to that kind of expertise?
We, we can, we can obtain, we can, we can obtain that kind of consultation. We can also work with Oregon Department of Forestry to provide information with respect to land management. There is a consultant that I have worked with in this area from Trout Mountain Forestry Services, which can provide that kind of information as well. We, and, and we would do that and plan to do that, we just need to have that opportunity. So it's the opportunity. There's nothing, there's nothing within the district's power to compel that conversation other than the, the contact with the consultant and trying to reach the property owner, because it is the property owner that is making decisions with respect to what takes place on this property.
Yeah, but you could come up with the alternative.
Yeah, we, and we have some, we have some alternatives that we would like them to consider based on the relative location of our intake downstream of this greater. So we would like to work with them on, and discuss those.
Do you have monetary prices, do you have prices on those alternatives?
No.
That's what I've had a hard time finding.
And that is, and it's so site-specific, there's a lot of considerations there. Go ahead Trish, if you don't mind.
Okay. Are you getting a sense from talking to the consultant that the owner is leaning towards changing his plans, or are you getting a feeling it's total opposition to change?
I, I do not believe it's opposition. I, I don't, I don't, I don't believe that. And until I'm, until that's the information that we've received, I'm going to act on the assumption that the property owner is open to the discussion. What the outcomes might be, you know, I'm not sure, clear of as well, but whatever that outcome is, the district will certainly share that with the group, with, with our community. Go ahead.
Oh, I just quickly wanted to circle back to the four agencies you mentioned. Can you give us a thumbnail sketch of what those agencies have to do with this process? You said DEQ, ODF.
DQ.
And where's the county in on this? The two legislatures?
Well, the county is working in support of the district and the community in response to this issue. The county commissioners have published a letter, we, in opposition of aerial application of pesticides based on this NOAP. That letter went out on the backside of the district's PSA a couple of weeks ago. We can, we can make that available if you'd like one before you do today. And I'm sorry, someone...
Yeah, because we've been calling the agencies, and sometimes you have to know what to ask to get the right answer.
You do.
And they spin you a circle.
This is not a, this is not a, an easy process.
No, so, DEQ.
And one that takes a lot of time, but it's DEQ, it's Oregon Department of Forestry, Oregon Department of Agriculture, and the Oregon Health Authority.
So what, do you have an idea of what all four of those people do in this process? All four of those agencies?
They work to support stakeholders, the community, the district, in developing specific plans to protect the source of water. So our source of water. And they do that through a team effort, and I have been trying to pull these four agencies together for the last three weeks, and I'm happy to report that if we've made any success here, this is one area that we have. We finally have a meeting scheduled for September 5th with this group. It will include Commissioner Miller, State Representative David Gomburg, and several from each of the four agencies will be in attendance at that meeting. So, so this is, this is the, so just to go a little further, the, these are the four state agencies responsible, so these are, are, under Oregon State Statute, these are the four agencies responsible for working with communities to protect source water, and these are, these are the agencies that we're, we're pulling together to help us. Go ahead.
Will that meeting happen here?
The, no, that meeting will be, that meeting will be occurring at... I, I'm not sure. I think it's the courthouse, yes. I, I wanna say it's the courthouse, in Newport.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so there's lots of hands up, I wanna make sure everyone gets a chance.
I have a question about testing. In my folder wherever it is, and probably in your papers there, it is a printout from one of the pesticides that's going to be applied, ousted extra, which is, which is a pesticide of moderate concern in Oregon. And one of the statements it's made, it's one of the class of chemicals that can be expected to, through runoff to inner surface water for months or more after application. So how does that factor? So it seems like every time it rains, to be safe, the district would need to be testing water.
You're absolutely right. So, so as a district, we are, that's the only mechanism we have to protect our, our water system. This group of four agencies is, that is their role, to come alongside us and develop a, a plan to protect our system through, through testing of the water to ensure that it's safe. They also work in the region to identify risks and then provide the district with some support and recommendations for how to manage those risks or eliminate them. So, so I, I think that I can answer more of those questions and more your questions with respect to, you know, what people do with the water. But I think it's, it should be, leaving this room, I think this, this group needs to understand and what we're trying to convey to our community, the community that we serve, is that we have no intentions of bringing any polluted water into our system and delivering it to our community.
How are you, how are you gonna present, prevent that?
By not bringing water in, okay? So, and by testing, and by whatever other recommendations that the state provides the district after September 5th.
I have a really important question that I've been wanting to ask since the very beginning of this, along with my list of things that come up, but this is a really simple one, about testing. Have, has this, has this district been testing this Sletz water source as well? Because your last one, I read the last test from you guys, I think it was in June, because Jeremy Robinson was here before the first meeting, said he knows how to read those. He's helping us find labs and stuff like that to be able to test our water and soil. And so he read that and said it was in June, and tested clean. So my question is, are you guys also simultaneously testing the old water source? Or, or in cahoots, are you reading their tests, I guess?
Yeah, so...
Are they testing zero as well?
Yes. So, so the, the other communities that use, and I have not seen the results, but from, from what I've been told in communicating with the city of Newport, that their, their tests for SOC's have also been known to detect. The district relies, in order to comply with Oregon Health Authority Drinking Water Program and state and federal regulations, our, our SOC sampling protocol has to be performed in a certain way, and, and those results are sent to analytical labs in Eugene, and that's where the results come from. I was asked a question, well, if, if I'm concerned about my water, can I have it tested at the same place the district has its water tested at? And you can't. I'm going to tell you that that's expensive, to do that. There are other, there are other methods for testing water for all kinds of things that you can, you can purchase online if you want to. Much of those tests and the results you, you obtain from those tests are not certified results.
We need certified results. We need a, we need a system for testing all of our soil water up from Beaver Creek near the state sites. The target site doesn't need to be organized or it won't count in court, because a part of what we're doing is putting pressure on the companies collecting all of our data so that if there is any drift on us, we'll be ready to sue them. If that's really...
So, so someone asked a question earlier, and just let me interject this for a moment. Someone asked a question, well, is there any state agency that, or any federal agency, I think, that, that has jurisdiction? And the EPA actually has the only jurisdiction in this, this effort, but...
The local EPA or the...?
It's, it's our Regional, Region 10 EPA office out of Portland. This is a, an office that is extraordinarily difficult to get in touch with.
Is that a bullet chuck?
But, but I think the reason for that is because the EPA will only get involved if the state agency is not doing their job. And the district, like the community, does not have legal standing until a violation has been proven. So through some certified method, not something that you buy over the counter and test your water, but it has to be certified, so there has to be actual certifiable proof from a qualified professional in that field, and that information has to be submitted within 60 days to, to qualify for the EPA to step in and do some... There's, there's a lot, it's a very complex process, but I still hope to meet with the Region 10 manager who I've been leaving voicemails with for the last week and a half. I'm gonna go, Trish, go ahead.
The turnaround, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm...
Barbara was trying to get in. Sorry, Trish.
I was just gonna say, the turnaround time for your testing is what? So when you, when you send the test to Eugene, when, what's the turnaround time for you receive the results? And does that fall within that 60-day period that you say you have for?
It, it would, but, but we would, you know, we, there's some, there's some opportunities there with our testing. It typically takes about six weeks to get SOC test results back. They go to a secondary lab. But what is, and, and I get that, that's not soon enough.
Right.
But what Brad and I do sometimes, when it's urgent and we really need to know, is we can pay a little extra to get results faster.
How, how fast is that?
I don't know that. I, I was on the phone with the lab this morning before this meeting.
So it would fall, it would, you might get the results back after that 60-day period has passed?
Right.
Which would leave us all, okay.
But, but, you know, we would, we would, we would be working towards that effort to get those results back.
Sooner, okay.
Which in perspective, Trish, when you have to, when you have your water tested for just the ordinary things, like for real estate things, it's arsenic and nitrogen and coal form, you get that back in a day. I mean, I call somebody, she comes.
Those are presence and absent tests, so those can be done.
Yeah, yeah, this is different.
This is, some of these samples are sent out to a different lab. So, so analytical labs in Eugene can sample for certain constituents, but others have to go out to complete the, the testing protocol. Go ahead, go ahead Bobby.
Okay, Dr. Miller. Excuse me. I commend you for getting four agencies together at the same time, in the same room. Very difficult to do. My, I'm hoping that, and I don't know, do they have the authority to delay the spray? What do you hope at the end of this meeting?
So, I'll repeat what I've been told by multiple state agencies to include the governor's office, that there's effectively, as long as the timberland owner meets the conditions of the Oregon Forest Practice Act, there is no state agency that has the authority to prevent them from performing the work that they've been permitted to do.
So there has to be a violation?
Is it, one of the, there are requirements under the labels for each of these applications in terms of how they are applied, how they're mixed, how they're applied, all that stuff. Doesn't it fall under Oregon Department Ag's responsibility to make sure that those requirements are followed? And do we have any leverage to request that Ag provide that oversight in the, sort of a worst-case scenario that goes forward? At least we can try to hold them to not, you know, to, to not make gross mistakes?
Yes, there is.
And is that, and do we, and do you, can you speak to, having applied the pressure to Ag to provide that oversight?
I have a quick interject, or a quick comment on that, if possible. I talked to the helicopter operator yesterday, Anthony Goodrally or whatever, because his name's on the, on the application, and his information's public, and he has a website that has all of his information. Phone number happens to be his cell phone, because he called me back after hours, I could hear the car moving. So he did call me back, and he, I just played like a, you know, just, I'm a concerned neighbor up here, I have all people on my road freaking out, and this is the truth, and contacting me, and there, she sent him a letter and got all the neighbors to sign it, like, please, oh my God, I'm super freaked out, blah, blah. Anyways, after a long, trying to be really, you know, in the middle, talking with him, I did say that we were going to have, you know, testing done before and after, drift cards, all of that, and he said, that's great. I said, because we're, I understand you say you're really responsible and great, he's a great flyer, and he's not gonna make a mistake, he said, he's really good at it. There's more conversation, details. But when I said we were gonna, I said, that's great, I trust you, it's awesome, it really helps a lot to know that you're just not some yahoo up there in a airplane, in a helicopter, but we still are gonna have testing done, and we still are gonna have drift cards, and we're gonna be watching, and, you know, blah, blah. He goes, that's great, because I'm gonna have the Department of Agriculture with me to watch you guys.
Which is great. Wow!
And I said, well, that's perfect for both of us, because I was gonna ask, somebody else was up there from an agency as well, you know, before I knew that you were so responsible and such a good flyer, and that this is your livelihood, and that you, you know, there is no drift beyond 10 feet, he says, and all that, so. And he also says the chemicals are safe, and he says you can just put some right in the cockpit, he's been doing it for years.
I've, I've talked to DeCarver about it a few times, they're not bringing anybody.
Right, I was gonna say, that's not true, but that is what he said.
Not true. Although what I don't understand is that on the side of the label of these things, which I have not seen, but I presume it says poison, and I presume it says don't ingest.
It also says...
So how is it that they're allowing them to put that in our water?
May we have Ted's question answered, please?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Ted, the responsibility for oversight falls on ODA and ODF. And the, the expectation I have, based on the, the numerous conversations that are going on like this, the, the high volume of public comments, email traffic that has been provided to these agencies, not just ODF and ODA, that they will be watching, because they know that there's a community watching. The, I think the significant, the significance of that is that the pilot will be watching as well. The property owner, the consultant, there's going to be a lot of eyes on this particular area, because they don't wanna make a mistake, because they know we're watching. They, they already assume that we know about the 60-day window, so, so that, and the 60-day window is, and you can read this for yourself, in the language, is for damage... in the language, is for damage to property. Well, the district doesn't own any property up there. We do have an intake, we consider that property and that's a position that we would take.
But it won't be damaged, structurally, it won't be damaged.
So, so we may not, you know, we, if we go into that, and, and God forbid that we do, but if, if that ends up being the case, you know, it could be decided that the district doesn't have standing because we don't have property.
We don't have our water, like, oh, isn't that water?
We would use that. But it is really, it's the property owners that have property and have the potential to incur damage.
Quit buying acres. The owner has an acre for sale.
No, I would, I would prefer to buy thousands of acres of them.
When you talk to the pilot, did you ask him how long the process takes?
I didn't. He, he got tired of talking to me after a while, so he had to go and I tried to do my classic and squeeze him a couple more words.
And I wonder how close to the perimeter, the boundary, that they would spray? You know, I mean, go right up to the line or back off a little bit? It's like logging, you know, I mean, have to get that last tree.
I did read the NOAA yesterday. And on at least two of the parcels, they are within 300 feet of South Beaver Creek. And so they are technically speaking not allowed to spray within 300 feet there. So there is some property that technically speaking they are not allowed, under the NOAA, to spray.
Yep, that's not what the buffers are. The 300 feet, if it's within 100 or 300 feet of certain things, the creek, a house, there are certain buffers that go along with each of those. I've talked extensively with Matt Thomas from ODF over these past few weeks, since I met him at the first meeting here and gotten way too much information on all of the laws and rules. It's 50 to 80 feet buffer on SSBT and F-type streams, which are the Steelhead, Salmon, Bull Trout, and Fish streams. There's differences on that, blah, blah, doesn't matter. 50 to 80 feet buffers. For a house, it is, I believe, 300 feet. For a home, 'cause about, I think there's five or six up on South Beaver Creek and Escalo that are bordered directly on, you know, are actual physical neighbors with Neymar's properties. And so I drove up to one yesterday in South Beaver Creek, the house is literally maybe 20 feet from the, from the property line. You know, the house is right there. There's a 300-foot buffer around a house, around a house. But it's not around the property line. If the house is within 300 feet inside, they can spray directly up to the property line. The buffers around the creeks are that 50 to 80. The helicopter operator has said that just to make sure there's no drift on his part, he generally extends the buffer, you know, to ensure it doesn't drift that extra only 10 feet that it's possible to drift. So he did say they held doubles.
Six miles.
Well, he said that, he said he read that somewhere in one of our things and that's just not true, is what he said. He said they're also not dangerous chemicals and that, you know, all the suits in California are probably not real or something along those lines. He doesn't, he doesn't know, he's, you know, he believes, he's trying to keep his business going. He also told me it's the cheapest way and that's why people hire him. He also told me it's the most sustainable way to deal with the forest and the only way that it's possible to get the trees to grow fast enough at the right, blah, 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 and overgrow the under story and the broadleaf plants. He also told me that not spraying causes forest fires because it is the underbrush that causes the forest fires and the spraying will help also help forest fires. He believes a lot of things that are specific about this that have nothing to do with anything scientific at all.
A lot of mold.
So that's, I wanna come back to that for a minute. Go ahead, Tanya.
Okay, so Alan, I have a couple of follow-up questions, 'cause I'm like, not very smart.
Yes, you are.
So I'm gonna come back, I'm gonna come back to this. So you're, you, we're getting this water from Seal Rock. You test it, we continue to get the water for 60 days until you get the results back? And so the water could be tainted?
We would, yeah.
Like, I don't understand that, like, kind of...
You're, you're acting, so the PSA is pretty clear. If, if the, if we, if we learn that there's aerial application of pesticides, we will, yes.
Yes.
So, so we, there is no, the district has no intentions of bringing water in that we, we may consider could be potentially contaminated with poison.
Right, we appreciate that.
No, no water community would wanna do that. But, so, but we would be sampling and we'd be requesting early turnaround on that, that sampling protocol before we bring the system back on.
I have one more follow-up question.
I'm sorry, can I jump in super fast? I just wanna follow up. If we do change to a backpack spray, then how do we address with the length that it takes to get the test back? If you're not, if we're doing a backpack spray and the runoff from the rains will take a while to get into the watershed, into your watershed, of course, we're doing testing up top as, as we roll along. As the rains start coming, we'll be doing testing the whole time on ground zero in order to let people know downstream on our website what's, what we're finding up top. So we want you guys to, you know, be thinking about the runoff as well and how to protect your customers.
So one of the recommend, one of the recommendations from the source water protection folks with DEQ is exactly that. We know we have a major rain event coming in and I think everyone in this room knows how Beaver Creek performs when you get a, an inch of rain in a short period of time or two inches. Our system goes off and we let that flush, run through the system, we sample again. But I'd be interested in learning more about how you're testing.
Well, we're scrambling to figure all that out, of course, and we would like support if you have any connections for us to get our waters, you know, tested.
Well, and that, that was my follow-up question. Thank you for asking that, because you guys at the first meeting, you gave me the name and a phone number of a place for people to call, to get their water tested. And just in this conversation, you talked about that the water had to be certified, tested? And so I just wanna make sure that the information we're passing out to people is correct. So do you have contact information? I only have one company that you've given us.
There's really only one company that, that you can use here regionally that's going to be, and Brad is gonna press you to Analytical Labs, et cetera.
Is it called?
Analytical Labs.
Is that for the individual or is that, would that work as well, like, in a court law?
No, this is a certified lab. You wanna, you wanna use it. There's, there's also Nelson Labs out of Portland.
Nelson Labs?
They could be in Vancouver. But again, you have to use a specific lab that is going to test for these constituents and meet the state's certification for testing.
May I make a suggestion about, about this? Because I, I come from the chemistry background. It sounds like your Eugene lab is not testing for herbicides on site. So you send them a vial with a code number on it and then they send it out to another lab and they wait for the results to come back and then they give it to you. Is that correct?
So, and so, and so forth, yes.
Okay. For the people who are, who are concerned about getting results back quickly, first of all, yes, it will be expensive because these are not easy tests to do. And second of all, if they're gonna be sent anyway, then we're not restricted to, to, to regional labs. You can send the water out to any lab in the country, right?
As long as it's true.
Exactly, that's my point, is you can find a lab that will give you whatever turnaround they can for certified results and pay the money for FedEx to ship them there. All right, but the cha-ching is gonna add up, right? Because this is not gonna be a cheap process. But you can, as you said, you can get results faster if you, if you pay for them. So looking for regional labs isn't really necessary because these little vials are gonna be on some truck anyway unless you're gonna drive to Eugene.
We drive, well, the, we, the Analytical Labs picks the, is that right, Brad? Is that how they do it? So they pick our samples up in, in Newport on Wednesday and drive them.
So you already have a shuttle service?
So, so let's, let's, on that, while we're on that subject, and what I've asked Analytical Labs to do is to provide us with a recommendation for the community to test for these constituents.
Nice.
So that, so that you're not, you're not having to go through the rigors that the, the district has to go through, but yet you're still getting the kind of results. I don't have that information right now, but I'm hoping to get that from, from the lab. And you're not, you know, do you really need to test for everything that we're testing for? Maybe so. We test for a lot of stuff and I'm hoping that, you know, maybe there's some economy scale there that folks could recognize and some lower costs. Go ahead, Trish, you've got your hand up.
The, your alternative source then, when you turn off the water for the testing process and you're gonna go to an alternative source, as I understand that, that's gonna be the Seles River. They're also having an aerial spraying starting on September 5th. So are they gonna be turning off their water for testing?
I don't know. They're, they're looking into that as well.
Have you, have you talked to them?
Yes, I have.
Oh, okay. Are they aware of this problem?
Yes, they are.
Okay, all right. Alan, can I just, can I just interject? Alan, would you please let me know about this community testing, if this is...
That's, that's what I'm doing.
That'd be great, James, so we can get that worked out.
I, I was curious if it would be possible in these extraordinary circumstances for the district to help the people out, out there, to help defray their expenses? I'm not, you're, on the base, because everything that they go through is gonna come to you. And you guys have much deeper pockets as the district than the people on South Low Road and Seal, and South Beaver Creek do to, to be tested, if that would be an extraordinary expense that could be taken to help pay for that testing. I know you're extending resources to help them find the lab, but possibly the district could discuss helping to pay for it.
So, so that's a very good question and the district wants to support the community in this effort. That's, that's our, our role here. It's not just to protect our source of water. The, the way the district's funds are managed are for, those funds are to be used for district purposes. So in district purposes, that's what those funds are for. Those funds are provided to us in a number of ways. By revenues from the sale of water and/or taxes. And that comes from our community with the expectation that that is used in, within the district. Any decisions based on that would, would have to be made by the board. That's not a decision that, that I can act on.
I understand.
The district does set aside funding in our budget annually for the wholesale purchase of water. But, you know, keep in mind that while we are dealing with this very, you know, acute issue right now, there are many, there are many risks and vulnerabilities to our drinking water source that could take our source offline at any time. And we would be seeking a secondary source of water. So we have, we have set aside funding for the purchase of water and for sampling. Although, I say that with, with the understanding that we may have to move money around internally in our budget to cover extensive sampling in, in the event that we get to a point where we have to do that. Because it, it is a cost to the district, it's, it's close to $2,000 just to run one set of SOC samples through, through the process of Analytical Labs.
Can we get back to specific questions? Some people haven't had an opportunity yet to answer.
Yes.
I just wanted to, on this issue, paying for the, the testing in the community, I think that question came up on the meeting two, two weeks ago when Rep., when Commissioner Miller and the others were on. And I thought I heard them say that they thought there was county funds that could be made available to help with some of these issues. I think there was some which would help with the water district, but others, so hopefully, you know, that would be another avenue to approach.
That's a good point. Who, yes, go ahead.
I live out there, on Bayview area, and I get water from the ground that comes up in this cement vat. And, and so what happens then if you do, if it's tested and there is poison there, in the water? Then what do we do? Wipe out our water?
I don't know that I have an answer for, for that in your, a private well system. I don't think the district can advise customers. I do know that the Oregon Health Authority and DEQ, I mean, you, if you're, if you do discover that your, your well is, and again, I can't, I wanna make it clear that I can't, as a district employee, provide advice. But I would work through the state agencies to sample the water, to certify that it has been contaminated and then work through those same agencies to, you know, file a claim against the property owner. And, you know, that's the same thing the district would do. If we, if we can identify that the stream has been impacted and we cannot use our system, we will be going back on the property owner to recover costs associated with...
Thank you.
Excellent, it's really important.
Thank you.
Have you guys, are there, what you just said, sorry, I just wanna jump in, 'cause everything keeps getting forgotten, I don't have to say it or ask it. Have you guys already started or made steps towards, towards that? Towards what you would need to do in the event that it is contaminated and you need to get your costs back? Yeah, legal steps. Because there is no third water source, as far as I understand, right? The water pipes are, you know, piped in.
Well, there's, the district, the district has two other sources of water. The two other sources of water do come from the Seles.
Okay, yeah, and I haven't researched myself, 'cause I'm just doing, doing research, everything. But I heard there was a spray in Seles not too long ago as well, as the one coming up in the fifth. And I do know from the fact that there's new laws in 2024 that are extending the buffers on all of the RMA, the cut zones, protecting sensitive areas. Everybody, as far as what I, personal opinion, as far as what I am seeing, is that everyone has logged their land really quick before these new buffers are, some buffer laws are instated. Everybody logging quickly around Oregon, because Lincoln County has so many logging private timberland sites. It seems to be that a lot have been logged lately and a lot are getting sprayed therefore, before the rains come. So this is particularly, seems to be a particularly dangerous time, you know? If one just happened in Seles and one's happening again soon, and like I said, I kind of, I haven't really been following the specifics of where they're at, but it seems to be like a Lincoln County and statewide major issue and it's affecting everybody's water. And if it's, if it takes six weeks to get a test back from Seles, even if they tested right after the last spray, by the time it comes back, what if it's contaminated? And the next one is the North Fork, I haven't, once again, I haven't studied the maps of where all these places are taking place. Beaver Creek was hard enough, so somebody else needs to find out how close they are. But I have a feeling it's not a positive possibility and soup might be the only option.
Other cities have, the other cities we rely on have different treatment processes than ours that, that may, may be more efficient at dealing with, with chemicals. I'm just not clear on what, on that right now, so...
Nobody knows to tell you right away if you wanna call them?
No, no, because they're, they're following up on this as well. So they're, they're folks. It's not, it, this is, this is a very complicated issue to deal with, as everyone in this room understands. And so I think it's important to discuss the, the near-term reaction to this as we kind of triage around these, these issues. But I think we're... But I think where this group really needs to focus a lot of its attention in the future is on the long-term solution, which is, is, is working, well, just my recommendation would be that this group work with your elected officials to, to effectively change the Organ Forced Practice Act.
A valid measure.
It has to get about initiative from the people. A legislature is not going to do it.
I want to reiterate what, what Representative Gomburg said. That is, that is a multi-year legislative process.
Yep.
It should be on his newsletter every single month. Every news release that he gives should be on there.
This is an important meeting. I got to change batteries. Can we take a one-minute break?
Yes.
Can we get back to specific questions?
No, I'm driving in.
Right.
I have not. I have not had an occasion, but I, I think, and I don't want to speak for the county commissioners, but it seems like that there was someone from that office.
And then fisheries and that type of thing, so, yeah.
So Adam, you talked about this.
Go ahead, I'll cheer.
I'm sorry. You talked about this interagency meeting that you're having?
Yes.
And then you talked to this lady right over here and you said it would be up to the landowners, that they would need to work with them. Is this meeting that you're having open?
Uh, this meeting right now is not open to the public. This meeting is.
So how, how are they going to know?
So, so the, the property owners that own property near the spray area, but it should be, if you, if you feel like your, your drinking water source is, is at risk, I think you need to be taking those precautions that are provided by the state agencies. This meeting, the meeting that, that we're having is to address how the district will manage risks in our drinking water system. We don't, of course, ours, our drinking water system, it's a surface water intake, which is much different than a well or, or some other kind of treatment process like, or water system like Cozy Acres Water District and how they're, they're going to deal with their system. I, I'm just not clear on how private property owners that live in that or exposed to this or at risk, how they manage that for themselves. I, I'm certainly willing to ask and will during the conversation. I'm just not sure how they do.
It would be nice if they had a representative at that meeting.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I don't believe we're talking about worst-case scenarios, but just this time. So Tiana asked a question at the very beginning about if the water gets polluted or poisoned, what does that mean for daily living activities? Taking a shower? I mean, I hate to think of the idea of buying bottled water, but that's something helpful for taking showers and things like that, or water your plants. Do you know that?
And that's the questions that I hope to get answered at the, the September 5th meeting. So, so one thing to note that, you know, from time to time, the district has had to notify our customers with respect to boil water notices. And that's really been typically very isolated to maybe a dozen homes or maybe just a, a community. It's a very easy and effective way of notifying our customers that we've had a loss in pressure. That's what it is. Under Oregon Health Authority rules and guidelines, if you lose pressure in your water system, there's potential that contaminants could enter the, the system. So you have to issue a boil water notice, you have to sample before you can turn the water back on. With this, with contaminants though, like this, like the ones we're talking about, boiling water is not recommended.
Right.
So that, how we approach that, again, is that we don't intend on bringing the, any pollutants into our system, first of all. But, you know, how we advise our customers in the event that worst-case scenario does happen, I hope to have that information on September 5th, yes.
Yeah, Adam, is there a chance of delaying the Beaver Creek spray based upon your difficulty in accessing alternative water supports, supplies, like at Sletz or this other place you, you were mentioning? Uh, you know, you could get water from somewhere, I'm assuming, but I think what we're looking at is something that's thrust upon us rapidly and anything to delay it, you know, is that something this agency could do, could explore?
We have, we've explored several options. We've requested from the state agencies, you know, with respect to is there any eventuality that allows the district, the authority to delay, or any state agency, the opportunity to delay the spraying, defer it, you know, so that we can react to this. And because, you know, the 14-day public comment period is just not enough time for something of this magnitude. But the information we received from the governor's office, if there is no state agency, not even the district, not even the governor's office that can, can delay this process.
Can a judge issue an injunction if a court case is filed?
Um, you'd have to have, you'd have to have justification that an injunction is warranted and our legal counsel is, is advised against that. You, you can take legal action. You can take legal action for just about anything. But if we take legal action and we, that's going to take time and it's going to cost, it's going to have a cost associated with it. And, and I, I think that, you know, the cost is warranted if we're going to protect the system. But if we're not, if we don't prevail, then we're not only responsible for our costs, but we're responsible for the other costs as well.
By, by time, however.
Yeah, again, thinking worst case. Did you say that the district is looking into methods that homeowners could use to post-filter, treat water to minimize exposure, reduce whatever, to remove the herbicides from the water? And, and if that's the case, could that information also be available to others in the community who might have their own water sources or different water sources?
Yes. Yeah. And I'm hoping to work, hoping to get more information from analytical labs on what they can provide to, to communities.
That's, they're testing. I'm thinking about removal, like a filtration.
Well, yeah, and Ted, that's, you can, you can go online and, and do your own research on, on that. Most carbon filters, RO filters, pretty inexpensive process for, for treating out herbicides, pesticides that may or may not be in water.
Right. I just did that, a quick Google, you know, how to remove pesticides, herbicides from water and, and several things come through. But I, I would imagine the community would like to hear from a knowledgeable source to say that here is some credible options that you could take if you need to. And I don't know, you know, I'm not saying counting on the, on the water district to provide that because that would be within your, you know, I don't know if that's within your mandate to do. But if you know somebody or you can advise, like, you know, go talk to Sally from, you know, company X.
Yeah, we, and, and the district kind of has to be careful in, in how we advise on that. I, it would be better, and, well, I mean, I'll say, I'll look into it. I, I think that's important.
And if you give that to us, we'll post it as a citizens' group.
Yeah, and I have. The, the, the recommendations that I've seen are to use a good carbon system. So, so whether that's a Brita, that, that, some, some Brita filters work. The Berkey system is, is maybe a higher-end kind of.
You're saying Berkey system will remove these chemicals because it doesn't say that on their site?
Yeah, so I, I'm saying, may, there's a possible, there's, there's, that's why I'm saying, the district doesn't want to make recommendations in those areas. It'd be better if folks did their own research and purchased those things that, that they feel are going to protect themselves. So there's RO systems out there too, a little more expensive, but, you know, they seem to, but again, you know, and unless we have something that we feel like we can advise our community to use, we, the advice right now is to, to do some research yourself.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm, maybe stepped beyond that, but if you know of any knowledgeable sources, who could become a, who could be freer and knowledgeable to recommend products that do, or approaches that do or don't work, that could be a community resource.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, so I talked to the county, county health department yesterday. They have, they don't know what to say. They have nothing to say about this whole thing. We're really, we're doing as much research as we can, Adam, so any of the information that you could provide us about what to do, like, again, not a doomsday scenario, but we would like to feel empowered as a community to know if this happens, this is what we do next.
Also, I just got a quote back from Analytical Labs in Eugene for $1,600 per person. We're going to need some help with that.
Almost the same as, as what their whole test runs?
Well.
Go ahead. Sorry, I have to make sure.
Yeah, I just had a question. It might be silly, but how come it can't be done with like backhoes and, and cats and clear the property that way?
We can do it by hand.
Even though.
It's already, it's already.
It's cleared.
Oh, it is. Oh, oh.
It's cut and piled.
And so what are they poisoning for? So stuff will begin.
Competition for the trees.
Things like that.
For the replant.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a reforestation effort. And so they.
So they don't compete with the trees.
They can kill everything now. It also buys them more time to be able to plant. They have to replant within two years and they have to be a certain height within five years, I think.
Can it grow fast?
Where? That's. No, it's, it's not, it is not proven. I mean, that's a helicopter operator. Please send me proof of this work if it's necessary.
So Adam, I have a question. Why does the, why does your municipality, why are you guys not capable of filtering out those sorts of things?
You know what? That is a really good question. We, we have.
I know it's, it's going to be expensive.
We have extremely, we have a, a brand-new microfiltration product. It's a membrane microfiltration product that filters out very small contaminants, but it will not filter out contaminants that become soluble. And that is, that is, not all of the herbicides and pesticides become soluble, but when they do, they can pass right through our filtration system. Still difficult.
And the charcoal that was mentioned, that's not.
Well, there's, there's some options that the, the district is looking at, maybe indirectly related to this, but more directly related to seasonal water quality issues, temperature, warmer temperature in the stream. And that is to introduce a, a granular activated carbon system to our treatment process. So, and this is something we, we're looking at for other purposes, not this purpose. But there may be an opportunity, because we haven't purchased that, we haven't really designed that into our treatment process, there may be an opportunity to maybe purchase something that will take out these contaminants. So, you know, it's, it's something that we're looking into, something in the future for, for our treatments. That's a good question. Okay, is there anything else?
May I just pass something on? Tiana?
Yes?
I emailed you earlier. I want to say to people, if anybody is getting in touch with, if anybody is getting in touch with HRI, the link on the website.
HFI?
HFI says HFL consultants, not HFI consultants.
Oh, I, you know what I did?
If you click, if you click on that, you will get the wrong email address on that website.
I thought I had dated it, yes, last night.
No, I checked it before I came here this morning.
Thank you.
Yes. So the email address for those four people is hflconsultants.com, not H, I'm sorry, is HFIconsultants.com, not the HFL that was on the website.
Okay, that's neat to know.
Okay, let me make sure.
Something that I was going to do again before I decided last night to come here, just so everybody knows, because it just could help. I had somebody copy as many emails as I could that people have sent out to other, you know, to the governor, to different people and including HFI and Nymark, the landowner. And so I don't have, I didn't have much time when this idea came. I don't have all the copies, but I have a few. I've, we've got a little packet ready. I'm going to go, my plan today, I'll make it, is to go to Salem and just hand-deliver to the governor and a few other people possibly. I'm just, you know, package, just because emails take so long to get there, that very possibly they haven't gotten there. So this is a quicker thing. And then to drive to Washington and hand-deliver them to the HFI consultant company. And so if anybody has any, you know, I don't, I'm going to have to recalculate possibilities of getting there, both of them, on time. The consultant company is in Rush Perry, Washington, which is kind of close to Vancouver right here.
It is just south of Battleground.
Right.
It's about three and a half hours from here.
They're post office boxes in Battleground, okay. So that's, that's my plan. And if somebody else wants to drive these things up or know somebody who's willing to go on a run, and also if we had information, we'd like to give him directly because it takes a while to get to the consultant company. It's taken a while to get to Nymark. Just also on that, trying to quick though, talking to Matt Thomas again at ODF yesterday and Monday, he had called the consultant company again on Monday, waiting for our request that many of us requested of a meeting of stakeholders, basically, everybody responsible on that, on the NOAP application, somebody from county commissioners, Gomburg, I'm not, you know, you guys, everybody's basically asked the same thing since the beginning of, we found out about this in different ways. And so he, the forester also hasn't heard back. He heard about a week before that, that Nymark was in, was around, or at least was now, you know, communicated, HFI was able to communicate with them because in the article that came out from, it had to be before, four or five days till he could communicate with them. While he's supposedly in communication, they have passed on all of the information, all of the, well over, as Matt says, well over 200 public comments were turned in in that 14-day period, by the way, so good job everybody. He had about, what, eleven days to do that. So Nymark supposedly, my landowner, has been sent them. He has had a chance now, a week or so, to read them. And so Matt Thomas reached out again on Monday to say, hey, you know, it's been about a week, what's up with this possible meeting? Hadn't heard back from them. I also called all of the four employees and filled up their voicemail with, you know, what we'd like to hear from them, we'd like a meeting, we'd like response now, I'd like Nymark's personal phone number and email, please, you know, all the information. Emailed them all the same thing. A lot of other people have been also emailing similar things afterwards. We're making a big push to get the information from him, to get him to make this meeting. And hopefully, I believe he's going to do a meeting. I believe he's going to at least talk to people. I don't know who he's going to allow in there. Just for the record, if anybody does hear from, about that meeting, if there's not a representative from Beaver Creek and from Seal Rock Water District, I'd like, you know, to ask for that and I'd like to be one of the representatives. I have two other people I'd like to bring to the meeting if it's a small group that, you know, are also, one's a biologist. So that's really helpful in understanding the, you know, the scientific aspects of all of this. Yeah, and so I just, I'm hoping maybe it'll deliver more help if anybody has a little later on that talks about before I do that.
There's just a few of us here, Adam, and some of us try to get out word of the community and thank God for Yahoo News. But the district hasn't put out any new information since the PSA of a couple of weeks ago. Hopefully, even if it's bad news, even if it's, you know, hurricane coming, the district can, can update the community, you know, the five, six thousand people that need to be updated about what's going on.
And, and we will. And we will do another update after the board meeting tomorrow night. There really, as you can see by the discussion here, other than the conversation that I've had with the state agency folks in coordinating a meeting with them on the 5th, not much for the district has really changed from the position of our PSA.
Right, but with the vacuum of nothing coming from the district, people are more afraid and more anger.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm getting that from calls and emails that I'm receiving from the community, and I'm informing the community on...
Could the district please ask the commissioners, county commissioners? I would hope that we would activate the community in asking the county commissioners to utilize Lincoln alerts that this, about the spray, that it's going to happen? Because this is just as important as a storm coming our way. I just, I'm really, to me, it's critical that we inform the community, not in a way of raising panic. This is like, just inform people that this is going on. We have people that are not connected to social media, that that's not their thing. And they're sitting there, the mobile home park, for example, many, many of those residents are 80 years old. They're not, or older, and they're not connected. They don't know. Yeah, not meaning, I don't mean that because radio, you're not connected to social media. I'm saying that they're, that I talk to people over there and they're, you know, that they're not necessarily connected to social media and they don't, they don't know. I talk to people every day, right here in this community, walking their dog, and they don't know. And it alarms me because I'm living right here. It's scary to me, like they should know.
So the use of Lincoln alerts is at the authority of the...
Discretionary.
Lincoln County Emergency Manager. So I know that, or I believe Ken Le, with the county, was going to look into whether or not that can be used for that. And I can follow up with that. Go ahead.
Thank you.
You have this meeting, a joint meeting with the agencies on the 5th. Do you have any sense of when the spraying might actually start? It can start on Saturday. So have you heard from the consultant that maybe it's not going to be until after the 5th? So is that meeting in time?
So I guess we can hope, Trish. If I'm, if I'm understanding the regulations for aerial application of herbicides, it's unlikely that it's going to begin on the 2nd, just based on weather conditions.
Good.
But don't take mine. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not doing that work. So, you know, there's some potential that this meeting could happen before...
Cross our fingers.
You know, but at any rate, I think it's important for everyone in this room to know that the district is doing absolutely everything we can in support of managing this issue and working with the community, not just the community of district customers, but the community at large. And we will be sharing information as new information becomes available with everyone. Please check our website. We've developed a page for this issue if you want information regarding that. If we receive information with regard to a schedule for meetings or spraying, or any activities or conversation, or anything that is newsworthy, that needs to go out to this group, we will certainly be notifying this group. When I say that we are working around the clock on this issue, every one of us are doing that.
And we appreciate that.
So I have, you may get an email from me during the daytime, but most of my emails are going out at night, when the phone's not ringing, and I'm working from home very early in the morning. So that's the level of approach the district is taking with respect to this issue. All of our board members have been advised with regard to the steps that we are taking in support of this issue. The board is briefed by email. The board will receive a full staff report on this issue at tomorrow's board meeting as well. Yes, go ahead.
I'm just wondering if anybody has given a thought to, it's all about us humans here, but has anyone studied or given any thought to the animals that are drinking that water that could be affected?
That live in the water.
They have, and live in...
Yeah, there's a problem for a lake in the coastal Comas salmon, a endangered species list. And so it's been brought up by a lot of the public comments that's in and other...
All the animals, so the deer and the...
Yeah, and everything else is fine, like legal, you know, legal ways to protect them. Those endangered animals are protected on a federal level. And so, and everybody can send in a personal suit and protection to them if they feel that, that somebody is violating their protection rights, as far as I understand. And the other animals, it doesn't seem like anybody cares enough to do anything to protect them, but yes. From what I read about glyphosate, I believe it was that one, it suffocates fish underwater. Yes, it will kill the Comas salmon.
Well, just one little footnote, just one quick thing. They have been logging up past me for so long, it's like, when are they going to stop? And they are just hitting deer left and right up there, and the vons that are being born now. They're not practically all over the roads, but I've come upon horrifying experiences up there with, with the deer that are so endangered up there. It's really...
It'd be nice to talk to hunting associations or somebody that would pretend.
Well, this sounds like it's not outside of Adam's purview.
Yes.
And Adam, I just want to say thank you to you for holding this meeting. I think some of this stuff is not within your control or at all, so.
Well, they have...
But we do appreciate everything you're doing, and we're sorry the situation's happened, and thank you for working on it round the clock.
Yeah, to add to that, for people who don't get their water from you, you have no obligation to us. And the fact that you are reaching out to the whole community, not just your customer base, is really important.
And you're not looking to transfer any time, are you?
Yeah.
Well, they fed me a long time ago, so I'm not going to... I want to say this to the group, that the district considers this group a resource for information, and we will also be a resource to, to the community at large, whether you're a district customer or not. I do want to get your contact information, because I want to put you in contact with someone that I hope, with the state, that can, can help you with, with your issue before the September 5th meeting. I do want to appreciate, appreciate everyone's time, because I know your time is valuable. Your input is important in the context of what's happening on the landscape today. But I do want to encourage you to, to become as organized as you can and seek facilitation, legal counsel if you can, in preparation for what will most likely be an uphill battle in the future to address this issue permanently. The district will support that effort.
We're doing that.
And I appreciate your time today.
Thank you, thank you for being so responsive. We appreciate it.
And he's so knowledgeable about all of that.